Called me in your order, seven o'clock, in Stanford, Judge. Just to note that on the agenda this evening, the annexation of Timmy Ridge has been taken off the agenda because of the clients requested to have it taken withdrawn for now, so that will not be discussed this evening. Okay, if we get the approval of the minutes of July 18th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion is to have the financial report and payment of the bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
No transfers of financial anything?
Nobody's having any questions.
Ken?
No.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to start off saying that June was another great month for the treatment plants. Discharge the great water, average 2.3 total nitrogen for the month, June, so it's still performing excellent. Good enough BOD, 4.1, ammonia 0.3, and cost per zero point 05, pretty good stuff. A few things I just want to give you an update on, we got a lot of good things going on. Today, the new generator went online today, fully operational, all of which has been completed for the big pump station backup generator. And the electrician's there today and everything's working real well, we put it through some test cycles, so it's great. That's a big one there. The well number one is just about complete, the upgrades that we've been making, we've been doing that in-house, and it's just about completed, new chemical feed systems, and new tanks, and new well pump, and the well's been, well number one's been, spring was cleaned, so she's going to be ready to go probably within a week, we'll have her online, so that's good. Update on well number two, today, I wanted to tell you that they drilled it 200 feet down, and they hit good soils at about 152 to 172 feet, so they put in a 20-foot spring from 152 feet to 172 feet, and completed all that work today, so tomorrow, AC Sheldon should start development of the well, so I would say maybe three or four days of development, and they should be ready to, and then, of course, they'll put the pump in and everything, so we'll be soon, we'll be moved into town, we'll do our part and get it up and running, but, you know, we're hoping maybe 250, maybe 300 gallon a minute in this well, that would be great, so that's moving along real good. What else I want to tell you?
You can't, excuse me for interrupting, but based on your guesstimate on that, how long do you think it would take to actually, I guess, get the proof that it'll actually produce that much?
Well, we'll know, we'll know, they'll know almost immediately, like, we'll know next week what the capacity of the wells going to be, pretty much. We, what we won't know is the capacity of the safety of the aquifer, that's a different, that's a little bit different.
And that's pretty much what, I guess, the MDE will allow us to take?
Yeah, we, the idea is that you're going to be able to produce, you're increasing your capacity from your wells, and the theory is that if you, if you cut back your well production, you're going to backwater in the ground, right, because you're not going to be drilling, constantly drilling it every day like we are now, okay? And so, so then, you'll be able to run, increase your withdrawal for a period of time and maximize your withdrawal, that's the, that's the theory. So what has to be done is, once the wells are installed, well, you know, we can, even in-house, we can, we can, we can get a, like, a baseline of what this, what the emeritus are going to be, but what we'll have to do is, we'll have to have a hydrogeologist come in, like Jeff Gurnear or somebody like that, and I work with Jeff at Aberdeen, and that's what, this is the approach that we've taken. So, what we were able to show at Aberdeen, same idea, we were doing about $2 million a day, and we had six wells, actually, we had 10, but four of the wells were at a different location, so we had six wells in this one location, so we added five wells to the same location, so we had, now we have 11 wells, so what we were able to pump was, we were able to increase our pumpage from $2 million to $3 million gallons a day, and we were able to demonstrate that we could do that for three months for 99 days, was what MDE required, so it was the same, same idea.
Now, all of these wells are coming from the same aquifer though?
Yes. Banking the water is an important part of that concept, so what, the way we've been operating the system since I've been here, okay, we've sort of, we've, we've actually increased the water supply from well three and well one into the towns, meeting the towns' demand, so we sort of made it 50/50, and, and of course, now we're purchasing 375,000 gallons a day, right? So, right now, the surface water plants are only averaging about 500,000 gallons a day, it's not that much, okay? But so, once the wells would be installed, I would foresee the surface water plant increasing to 1.5 million a day, because right now, your average flow is like 1.6, that's your average demand, 1.6 million per pound, so you could bring, well, you can meet that with the surface water plant, you wouldn't even have to run your wells, so I think, so then, we could, we could do that for like six months, right, and then, and then see just what kind of impact that would have on the aquifer, I think would have a great impact, and I think then you'd be able to turn your wells on and really hit them, and see what, I think you're going to be happy with it, but we got to get the wells in.
Well, too, I understand that the water, demand for water has dropped, is that?
Yeah, that's right, I mean, that's what I'm saying, a 1.6 million is, you know, it seems like it would, it was more, actually, when I was, when I first came here, I think we were averaging like 1.7, a little more than that, than 1.75, so it has dropped. What else I wanted to tell you was, we had a, we had a tour of the surface water plant, we had 20 kids come down from Fair Hill Nature Center on the 18th, and that went real well, they were really well behaved, and they really, really enjoyed it, it was a good, good, good tour, and, I think that's it.
Despite the suffering, which I just saw on the news, in the other part of the country, I guess, this area up there on the east coast, and specifically often, is pretty much safe as far as the water goes?
We're doing pretty good right now, but, you know, but the flow in the stream has dropped, today is pretty good, but last week, it dropped down about 17, it got down to about 17 cubic feet per second, so when that happened, we had to notify Ortiz in that, you know, if it continues, we're going to be, we might need more water, but with the fact that we're purchasing 375,000 a day, we haven't needed to purchase any more than that, we're just trying to meet that, that little goal, so, but we're, right now, I think we're a little bit better off than the rest of the country.
Great, very good.
Good.
Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Looking forward to the golf tournament, right?
Yes, you are.
August 17th?
Yes.
So, I know Louis has got a foursome, right?
Came from the top of the shell.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you.
Have a good turnout.
Okay.
I just want to stick with the thing I had.
Okay, there. Louis?
First item I have is ordered 7-2012, amendments to Town Code, Chapter 9.04, alcoholic beverages, specifically Section 9.0410, public consumption, providing for the consumption of alcoholic beverages by patrons of a restaurant with outside seating and serving premises. Principal amendment to Section 9.0.10, includes addition of paragraph eight, which states, alcoholic beverages may be consumed by patrons of a restaurant as defined by the Alcozony ordinance, licensed to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on restaurant premises, inclusive of seating and serving area outside the building that is an integral part of the premises of the restaurant. This ordinance was introduced on the 18th and is subject to adoption tonight.
Motion to accept, ordered 7-2012, alcohol beverages.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If opposed, motion carried.
Second item I have is the Bay Restoration Fee Hardship Exemption Application. Give credit to Mr. Repole for dolping this form, he followed example produced by the county, but Senate brief out to the board, I'm sure you have it, I'll capture why we're doing this. Back in 2004, Senate Bill 320 was passed, established the Bay Restoration Fund. As part of that, a fee was established, I think it was 250 a month, wasn't it, 250 a month? And, of course, the towns been collecting that fee and then submitting it to the state. Well, this year, they pass House Bill 446, which doubled that to $5 a month, we bill quarterly, so we charge $15 per quarter. But the House Bill 446 also provided for a hardship application or program that the town shall implement, so we were required to do this, and of course, the counties will do it also. So pursuant to that, we were, provided an application form that was approved by the Maryland Department of the Environment, provides with an annual fee of $60 to be waived for qualified residents, specifically to resident owner occupied properties who apply, who have applied for, and to see homeowners tax credit for the same fiscal year as the application, and to additionally receive benefits from the energy assistance subsidy, or public assistance such as direct temporary cash, or assistance or food stamps, for example, social security disability income, or veterans disability benefits. This application form will put on our website, so it can be downloaded, also be available in the town hall, we're going to put advertisements in newspapers, on Facebook, Twitter, and put it to our news to email friends, we have a number of people who have contacted the town at the time, and left their email address, and we have a database for that, and we send the stuff to them, so they have their own mailing list. So, all I need from the board is the approval to use this form and to authorize staff to proceed with the administration of this Restoration Fee Hardship Exemption Application Program.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the Bay Restoration Fee Hardship Exemption.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The board has made a decision some time ago to proceed with the Alco Recreation Center, they allocated money, separated a million and a half dollars by resolution for the purpose of this, this project, they've selected a location, the property owned by the town on Route 40 adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, pursuant to that, the town, these I and Steve and Mary, met with Clark Design Group as well as KCI to develop some architectural and engineering services. The, I submitted this to the board, the Clark Design Group agrees to do the architectural services, and they have broken it down to a schematic design phase for $36,000, the design and development phase, $42,600, preparation of the contract documents, $74,575, bidding negotiation, $9,700, construction administration, which, when the building's under construction, the architect will play a vital role in directing the effort and managing, helping to manage, let's put it that way, the construction as they did in this building. Total for architectural services is $198,500. From KCI, we received this couple of services for engineering services, to include down the photographic survey for $17,800, geotechnical testing for $16,151, schematic design for $7,784, design development $19,962, instruction documents $32,981, for a total of $97,496. Total for architectural and engineering services for the project are estimated at $295,996.
Louis, I just have a question for that, not to prolong the project or whatever, but how do we know that these numbers and figures that you've given us, even though you say we're using Mark Clark or whoever, are the best price we can get for architect work, and just because we say we're using him, how come we have to? I know that's one of the things in order to get the project started, but how come all of a sudden, we've got to throw the money that way, not trying to take away? But I'm, I'm just trying to get right down to it, how come we don't have other options other than just one person?
The board can elect to take any option, what? I can have a professional specification drawn up and put it out for bid, if you want to do that.
I mean...
You're not obligated to do any of this, it's just a proposal.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Audience needs to get, that's all.
I'm just asking because, even though you're doing it, and again, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing and how we're doing it, not just saying we're going to get Joe Blow to do this or whatever, I want to find out where the numbers and dollars, and if we can save to put towards a building, I would love to see that.
So, are you asking, do we bid it out?
I can't speak for my office, he's asking if he's bidding it out, but I agree with all, there should be a comparative figure.
Well, that's what I'm saying, how else can you do it besides bid it out?
Well, wait, Louis just presented, he just, who did you say you would see? That didn't sound like a bid, I thought you was going to...
I'm sorry?
Who did you say you would look into to come up with another figure?
I, I don't know, I'd have to probably do some research myself, because I'm not an architect or an engineer, and a specification is a very technical thing, so when we did this building, of course, we chose an architect.
Right, and bid it out.
And if I'm not mistaken, the reason we went for the bid, not to say we're not going to bid it out, was because Clark Design Group did in-kind work up to this point for the recreational center, for the design and concept plan.
Oh, no, I...
And that's, so I just wanted to say, that's why I think we originally went, that's what...
If I had a business in kind work, I would do something in kind to get the business too, I'm just saying, and if you use that term, in kind, I'm looking for some business, so some other opportunities for other architects would probably love to have the same opportunity, so if it's bid, and maybe we might bid it down another 50,000 or 60,000, just because they say they're going to come out of kindness of the heart, it's going to cost them some dollars kindness of their heart, so I'm just bringing that up, it's not to get on you, I'm just saying, where the dollars can be saved, we'd like to save it and use it on the building, that's basically what I'm saying.
Well, no, in fact, I'm going to need to do, bid it out.
I just need the board's authority to bid it out.
I make a motion that we proceed to find a comparative rate for bid or another option.
I'll second on bidding itself.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Do we have the, did we get that?
Yeah.
Do we know? Okay. We're kind of quick and everything, so I mean, did I sum that up right? You were asking that we...
I think that's what he said.
...look at some other, some different ends, like, is that right, Mary?
I just asked the question.
No, no, and I agree with you, right?
That's fine.
If you wanted to bid it out, you're right.
I make a back vote.
It's a, it's a big job, I mean, a big job like that, you know, it's free, free bids.
Okay, I don't have any other business, Mary Jo?
I don't have any other business.
As far as old business, Louis, I wanted to make sure we still had our fingers on the 279, and, is that North Street over there in front of the metal school? We still have a finger on that, kind of keep...
Yeah, that was approved by the Department of State Highway, the Office of Traffic Safety, UTEH, it was approved, and it's, it'll be constructed.
Okay, that's awesome, so that's...
It just takes them...
The light there.
...a lot to do, but it's approved.
Okay, okay, awesome, that's great, that's great.
The only thing I have, a couple of things I have, is if you haven't noticed already, we talked about, it's a federal project, apparently, and I talked with Delegate Rudolph, all three mayors here in the county here with long reality, with the guardrails going up. The guardrails are up there now, and it is, it is totally different, see the guardrails there, and it makes things a little rough, and they, the point of it is that, I guess, the federal government's checking out any crossovers for head-ons, and as far as I know, if I've been around with the fire company, we've never had any crossovers that had a head-on, but it's a federal project, and like today, it's even, kind of makes it rough, we've got to get used to it, we had an accident out there, and the ambulance couldn't come across, and apparatus had to stay on one side, apparatus on one side, and patients are on the other side, you have to carry the patients over the guardrail, so it's going to get some, taken used to, because it goes from state line all the way down to Perryville. And the other thing is a new light, up at Route 40 and 213, the poles and the lights are up, there's a new intersection, not functioning yet, but should be shortly, so take down all the old green poles and have that nice lighted section up there, so that's another addition. And they're starting work on Delancey Road to expand the right-hand lane, that's where it's beginning there, so we can get in some projects going. And the other thing is that, at our meeting back in June, and I just, I lost the type, but I finally found it, we received for the second year in a row, the Banner City Award, so Louis, I have the little plate, we can put on our little plaque out there for our Banner City, that's two years in a row.
Thank you, Michelle, for all your hard work.
And then I got a thank you from the Arts Council staff for the melting pot event that we had in town, that it was very nice of us to support it, and it was a great success.
That's not the same event that we got criticized for not being there, is it?
Right.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And we sitting here talking about how good that is, and we get a late, another ten, we should have been there?
Well, I just got this from the Arts Council.
But do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, they just sent everybody.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm bitter about that, for somebody to be doing that, and then we're going to sit here and praise it, I disagree with it, but it's always good to get recognition for doing something good.
Right. And not to say anything from you, Mary Jo, I guess we all got the...
Yeah, I was out of town.
The Ruby Tuesday Give Back Program?
Yes.
So, that's a wonderful thing to help the boys and girls club out, so we all need to go down to Ruby Tuesday's and have lunch or dinner, I guess that's good for lunch and dinner?
Lunch and dinner.
Good. August the 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, and you can do it from your iPhone or have the cameras.
Yes.
So, that's good. All right, that's all, Mary Jo?
I really don't have any new business surprises, that old business to thank everyone for the alcoholic beverages on the street at the car show, it was raining in Delaware and Pennsylvania, so we didn't have a huge group like we had last time, but people were very appreciative of it, so I thank Mr. Nicholson for bringing it up, and thank the board for agreeing on it.
I have nothing other than, we, I definitely received these cards.
Yeah, I just got them today, they were dropped off, and I know we said it was a different type concert, but this is what is in planning now.
Is $45 a bit hot, or is it not, for you?
I don't know, I don't go to these things.
I just figured you may know.
I don't know.
This is all outside too, right?
As far as we know, but the chief still needs some information, he just told me, so. I don't know really what's going on, I just know, I was asked to hand these out. Chuck might know some more.
I'm sorry?
I said you might know some more information on it.
What was that? I just... I don't, I mean, it looks like the artists and everything have changed.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know why I would know anything else.
Mr. Repole pointed out that Winstock was free.
What was free?
For Winstock.
Speaking of Ruby Tuesday, out there on 40, is there, is there any way we can get them to trim the weeds off that little, right off of 40, as you go into, like you're going towards Ruby Tuesday, they got the weeds, look like, you know, little bushes and trees right there at that corner. Also, if we could do some weeding at the skate park, towards the railroad, it's looking like it's pretty out of control. Out of Quail Court, there's, there's an address of Quail Court, 127, it just looks like it's going to cave in, and like, no windows, doors, I mean, I haven't seen anything that bad in a long time, and it's been there with for a while, so if we could, if we get some code enforcement out there, appreciate it. And there are a couple of other houses out there as well, that are in pretty bad shape, butters hanging down, things like that, but I'm sure there's something going there, but that particular house, 127, you know, there's kids playing around, and it's just, it's just pretty bad. Also, out there on, was it Cow Lane, the playground equipment, that equipment, it looks like it was repaired at one time, but now it's all graffiti up and all, so I wonder if we can get out there and clean that up. I did watch, there's a bunch of little kids out there, and it kind of, it kind of pulls at you a little bit, because you know the little kids are not doing it, they're like three, five, six years old, and they're out there trying to enjoy the equipment, so we're going to have to give them some help, and I'd like for us to get out there and clean that up, so they have a nice place to play. I've got a long list here, but I think I'll just, I'll copy the rest and give that to you, Louis. I just took a quick, quick drive through on the way from work, and we've got, for example, there's a, there's a pile of garbage, probably as high as two cars, out there at East Net Court in front of 114, and I'm not sure how long it's been there, but it's soaking wet, and it, you know, I don't know what's running around out there, so, so I'll stop with that, but I'll give you, I'll give you a copy, this is, if we get that looked at.
We do have graffiti cleaner, we use that for graffiti cleaner.
That's good.
That's the spray.
Yeah. It's pretty good. Okay, Ron?
Good evening. I'm always accused of not speaking up loud enough, so that draws it down to me. I actually have three, three complaints.
Ron, just said your name and address.
What is it? Oh, 242 Dollar Street, Runmore Drive, out of the Maryland, that is one, okay, excuse me. Three things that I'm concerned about in, with regard to the street that I live on, one, it seems that some 15 years ago, 60, 70, whatever it is, I'm not... not sure, uh, uh, the city used to weed eat from the sidewalk out to the curb and in the area where the cars parked, 'cause it's kind of off-street parking there, um, which, uh, over time, I guess it just got out of the budget, or, or whatever happened, I'm not sure, you know, loan on money, or whatever the problem is, you know, I understand all that. Uh, but that's neither here nor there. It, it, uh, I, I attempted to cut, uh, because where I live, there's actually four places, and, and the gentleman on the end passed away, and I guess he got turned over to a bank, and they, they, they cut the grass in the front and in the back, but they don't do anything about the curb, or, you know, so the weeds grow up probably as hard as this table, you know, um, and of course, when the wind blows, when the trash blows down, you got, I don't know, I never count the kids, but there's probably fifty, uh, in that, in that development. I'm just guessing at that, but, but, uh, you know, they don't use, uh, trash cans to put the papers in, they just throw them on the street, or whatever they can. By the time the wind, you know, gets in that area, then you get lamination, it really looks like hell to me. So I, I attempted in, um, uh, I'm seventeen years old, it's not easy for me, I can assure you, to get out there and weed eat, you know, uh, and when I was thirty, it was no problem. Now, I've only been there five years, some of you know, some of you don't, but my wife has been here for seventeen years. I remarried her in two thousand nine, which, um, some people said, "No, how could you do that?" You know, you've been divorced twenty-five years. Well, we're two different people than we were then, and, uh, but she's still adamant, and, and, uh, she likes to, you know, to find us to look appropriate and so forth, and we did the best we could do, but I certainly can't be weeding that all the time. I'm just asking for a little help. That's the one concern. Uh, the other concern is, uh, is the, uh, out back where the, where the trends go, uh, there's an area there that's been just loaded up with, uh, with garbage. Uh, their dogs, I, I, I really don't go back, back there that, you know, that often, but it, it really needs to be cleaned up. Somebody told me once, some belong to the railroad, I don't know which is which, you know, but I'm sure the town, uh, uh, Charles there, and I discussed this, so he's, he's aware of what's, what's, what's going on there, you know, but it needs to be cleaned up, but it's for sure. The kids don't play out there, uh, and I'm glad for that, you know, they, fortunately, they have their little area open, uh, uh, projects there, you know. And actually, I'm, I'm ashamed, uh, because the projects look better than what Douglas Street does. I just, I can't fathom the thought of that. I just can't. I mean, I, you know, I, I'm redundant in, in saying that, uh, uh, finances don't warrant that what other, you know, middle-class, um, class people can do as far as money, but, uh, we're low-income people in there, uh, but, uh, I'm born and raised in Detroit. I can tell you about what it looks like in the city when it looks bad. I can tell you about that. And Douglas Street doesn't look bad, but, uh, Mary Jo and I had a conversation sometime ago, and they come in once in a while now, and they'll, they'll do the street, but, uh, you know, sweep the curb and so forth with that vacuum cleaner, whatever. And this pile now is piled up again, uh, because no one's been down with the vacuum. You know, I say going up and down, uh, um, what's the, uh, what's the name of that lane?
Locust Lane.
Locust Lane. I, I'm getting old timers too, uh, or sometimes, I'm not really sure. And the third thing is, uh, and it really upsets me, because over the last five years, I've seen storms take out at least, I can remember, four, maybe five trees. Now, we have a tree out in front of our place, but it doesn't belong to, it's not on our property, you know, and the roots rooted down, and of course, I had to go through a, a very expensive replacement of the water because of the, you know, not only because of the age of it, I mean, it was twenty years old, a mansion, but the, the big roots that uprooted under, you know, and caused, uh, didn't help any. So, and I'm not gonna mention who the landlord is, because I, I'm not here to desecrate, you know, anyone's neighbor, and anyway, he, he's a good man, but I mentioned to him, because a branch has broke off in, in the storm we had here in, uh, 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 June, uh, one broke off, but not all the way. Well, that concerned me, and I approached the person, and they said, "Well, that's what I got insurance for. I'm gonna tell you one damn thing, I'm glad I'm not an insurance company, because he'd be a..." I didn't really wanna hear that. I really didn't wanna hear that. You know, God forbid it could be a child underneath that branch fall off or whatever. You know, now you got branches that are coming out over onto where our property is. I sent him a letter, I haven't gotten a response yet, and I don't think I will get a response, you know? I, I don't wanna go to the course of cutting the tree myself, or have it done, because it doesn't belong to me, so I don't wanna break the law, you know, as far as I go. So, but, uh, this needs to be taken care of as far as I'm concerned. I, I just don't want that tree falling on, on, uh, our, either our automobiles, or the house, or a person, you know, it just, you know, I've seen other ones, so we need to have that taken care of, I believe.
Can you tell if it's alive, is it still, is it dead, or is it still, or just the branches are getting too big?
No, it, it's just, the, the, it's, it's stayed in our, when it was out there to look at it, was, well, this tree grows five feet every year, unless you tell me about it.
If you just give the address, we can get Louis and them to take care of it. Just get the address, could you give her the address? Your address and, um, the next door, whoever.
Next door, two forty Douglas Street.
Two forty Douglas Street. And we'll send, we'll send our people out there, the code enforcement, to take a look at, and the stuff in the back there for you, and see what we can do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, my wife is terrified, and I can't blame her, you know, because we had already, uh, I must say, four or five trees that have already, you know, blown over, you know, I guess why they ever put them there, I don't know. I understand, I don't think the city did it, I believe that the homeowner, you know, put them there, but, um, I didn't realize what it could do, you know.
Okay, we'll check it out for you.
Yeah, that's all I had.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Littenberg?
Uh, Littenberg, what if I wanna lean Elton? I only had one thing, but, uh, since you had some discussions here, brought some other things to mind, uh, the, um, community center, the recreation center, didn't you already pay Mark Clark approximately sixty thousand dollars for design plans at one time several years ago?
We did find, we did have a design once, first time around.
Wasn't it around sixty thousand dollars?
It's close to it.
Well, I mean, the, the design that he showed that we saw here several years ago was about the most expensive way you could build anything, with the peaks and valleys and, and whatever it may be. I guess if you looked at the Boys and Girls Club at, up at Bear, many of you going up there to see that? It's a square building? Now, whoever built that, they've got an architect that designed that building, and whoever the builder was, could have an architect in there, they could come down and present something that would save you a lot of money, I think. Just my opinion on that. Um.
Maybe you can do that, Louis, see if we can find the architect who did that.
You gotta go up there and find that, because the.
The board made, board directed me to bid it, so I might have to find out and put him in the bid.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I did it.
I was saying, Louis, just go up there and look at it, but I don't know if it makes you.
Well, I think, you're the ones who should go up there and look at it, because you're the ones gonna make the decision, not just Louis.
I, I could contact the regional director.
Right.
And get that information, if, if you wanna look into that.
Cause I'm sure that there's somebody that, whoever built that has their own architects on staff that could, uh, design any way you wanna do the inside of the place.
And essentially, you'll find a lot of the, uh, Boys and Girls Club are with the same design who write Delaware.
That's what I mean.
Actually, on the Boys and Girls Club websites, they have designs that an architect or planner can go to, to choose what's in your budget for some type of community center like that, or if you had other means of funding to go higher, so there's anything from, and it's by square footage.
Right. But it's a square building, and you can design the inside any way you want to, wherever you get that, the shell of that building up. Uh, on this, on these expenditures, that Claritin Hotel for two hundred and forty-one dollars, what was that for? Steve?
I just signed that check. That check evidently is for the mayor to attend the MML in October in, uh, Annapolis.
Okay. The Elton Car Wash, last week, I think, to the bill, or two weeks ago, was a thousand dollars to the car wash, and you got two hundred and eighty dollars. What, what, what departments using the Elton Car Wash?
The Elton Police, the vouchers for Elton Police, vouchers for, you know, for the year.
You don't have a place down at the Public Works Building, and they can wash cars down there?
It's not as quickly as Elton.
Okay, that's just the question. What?
Well, we don't send officers down to Public Works to wash your cars.
I didn't say for them to wash it, but then there's someone down there that could wash the cars?
No.
Okay, that's, that's my answer, all right. I think that you ought to have some kind of a certificate of beautification, whatever it may be, for some of the people that buy these properties that need a lot of work to fix them up, clean them up. For example, these two houses that Dwight Hare bought over here, he's made a good-looking job of those, and coming into town, they look good, and somebody ought to be commended for that.
That's a great idea.
I mean, it makes a difference coming into town.
I agree with that.
And I think the money that they've spent, and those kind of guys are your good landlords, as opposed to some of these other ones that really don't care, and they should be, should be commended for it.
I, I think that is an excellent idea. It's an incentive for others to do the same also.
What's also appreciated to him?
Appreciation for, I mean, yeah, because it's a lot, it's costly to take an old place to fix it up, rather than buy a new building itself.
Kind of a block or something made up and.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I, I did commend him for that. He stopped by to see me one day, and spent a little time with me in my office, and I complimented him on his particular building.
Very good. Mr. Nicholson?
He did mention that, Louis. He did, he did mention that. Talking. James C. Nicholson, hundred and thirteen North Street, Elton, Maryland. A question about the order that you pass for the alcohol beverage. I'd like to know, have a clarification of it, of what does this mean, because it could affect me if I wanna do something outside, or do something, cause I have an alleyway, how's it affect me? I want it clear. You gonna send a letter out to say what you're allowed to do, and what you're not allowed to do? If I wanna do something on the outside of my place?
I think what it's, they, who wants to try?
You talking about on your sidewalk and in the alley?
I'm talking about in the alley, and, and thinking about probably, um, what, what I'm allowed to do with this new ordinance, that's all.
Yeah, I think the ordinance itself states if you're having food in your restaurant area, you can have the, um, alcohol beverages and the food outside of your area also.
Okay, suppose that you don't have a restaurant license, and you wanna do it? You wanna entertain?
Yeah.
No, in other words, you're just picking restaurants to rent, but not a regular bar.
Find it a restaurant.
Don't you have the capability, though?
I have a capability, but I'm just asking questions, that's all I wanna know.
Yeah, but I think on the property you own, though, you are allowed to serve, and my, I'm, I'm, Norm, you can make this, but I'm almost positive.
I know, but you gotta get permission if you go outside. Am I right or wrong? That's what I'm saying.
But if the town had a waiver, though, for the town, and he has his alcohol license for his establishment, and he served, uh, on his property outdoors, he would still be okay.
That's correct.
No, I, I know that, I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah.
Because I, because I'm planning in the future to maybe do something, but I wanna make sure it's clarified.
Come back and say, "How do you come back, clean two buildings?"
Yes, a little alleyway. Okay, and the only, the other thing I have is the Elton Recreation Center. I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, but I think you should take your time and plan what you're doing. You have to find out what your operation cost is gonna be. Don't get in a position where you're gonna be so far in debt, and not only that, but you're gonna cross Route forty. You already have problems with people crossing Route forty. How are these children gonna get there? You're talking about this for the children. How are they gonna get across Route forty? You gonna give them bus service? You're talking about people that can't afford transportation, and you're gonna walk across Route forty. No one's gonna put a bridge over it. I don't think you should really think about where you're gonna have your recreation center. I mean, it's, I, I think it's great that you really wanna do it, but I think you should get the cost factor down, and once you put it across Route forty, I think you better think about crossing Route forty. There's a lot of people in Elton that's gonna use that recreation center. So, all I'm asking you is to think twice, and do your research, because, and also your operation costs, because it's gonna cost you a lot of money if you put it across Route forty, you better start giving bus service. So remember that. And thank you, I just wanna, I wanna try to save us money.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, that's fine, too, and, and he brings that up, but yes, you know, I still feel as though, you know, you own the property, and you're gonna use what you have, and if parents or parents of the name, parents, they would make sure that their kids would have safe access to get to that rec center and get home.
I, I agree with you. We save a lot of money by using our own property, so.
Well, I was the one not favor of that property because of Route forty and the location. I just think it should have been on this side, but we already, we went through that, and I was out voted, so.
And Mary Jo, I think, I think I agree with you, because looking at, uh, you know, that first, that first location and all that, but, you know, it's our property, and that opportunity saves us money.
I, I still think that we don't wanna go backwards on what we're doing, because, number one, we've been through this three, four times, and, and there's good points brought up about the recreation, and I'm not knocking it. Here's the thing, we're talking about going to Delaware and looking at the, uh, place, and that was the first building we talked about from Bear, Delaware, was the recreation center. Now, we have a, uh, architect that's dealing with a specific piece of property and, um, building based on that property, and I understand we paid him a long time ago for certain, um, architect work for that location. This is a new location, and it has a new drawing for it, but now we're based on the drawing that we have with this architect. And we're gonna go right back to the, the Bear, Delaware, to a flat building, we already mentioned this, but again, uh, why don't we get a pole barn up and such and, but it came, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right. I remember all that conversation. So we don't wanna look backwards, because, again, we did say we're doing it for the kids and also for the adults. One point I wanna make out, if they wanna use the YMCA, don't they drive out there when they need to use it? We can't have a special location if we have the property right there in town. Somebody's gonna have to come across the highway anyway. We can't just do it just for the people on this side. Somebody's gonna have to drive their kids and be safe wherever we go with the building. That's the point I'd like to make. Whoever brings their kids have to be responsible for safety is first, but the key thing is, we don't have an ideal spot for everybody, where they don't have to cross the road, or, or whatever.
Can I say something? Do you really think that the design plans that Mark Clark brought in here two or three years ago is the best way to go with that, or a building like the Boys and Girls Club has got?
The question you asked is.
Would you build one like that if you were building it out of your own pocket or?
I, I would, based on what I have to, uh, to use to build a building, and that's where I would start my building from. The money that I have that will build that building. If it's two hundred, three hundred thousand, that's the building I would be able to start, because here's the key thing I wanna say. We got kids out in the hot heat in the summer programs out at Meadow Park that can't go nowhere. If it rains, they don't have a building, so.
We're not, we're not disputing that.
Okay.
We're disputing the cost of building a building with the design that you people approved of.
And when you say you people, I don't, when you say you people, you talking about the board?
The board.
Okay, 'cause.
When I say you people, I mean the board.
Okay.
The board approved of two or three years ago, and that is the most expensive way to build anything. These architects designed things for their portfolio.
And that's why I like to bid the thing out.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I'm saying there's, there's, there's buildings that you can build it and give you sufficient use of it for a whole lot less money, that's my point. If you were building something like that yourself, out of your own pocket, would you, would you go with that design he had there with all the peaks and valleys and so forth? Or would you go to a place like they've got there that they, they've been building these forever in, in, in Delaware? I think you'd probably go that way, I would assume. That's, that's, that's my point.
I, I tell you, one of the first things I said was, "Let's get the biggest building we could get, pole barn, and they can make them really nice, and you can actually add to them as you get more grants, funds, or whatever." That's, that's been my whole idea.
But I think when you say pole barn, people think of a pole barn.
Well, metal building.
Metal building, they can understand what you're saying.